Good afternoon, I'd like to call the Middletown Public School Meeting to order. On Tuesday, March 5th, 2024, all members are present. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna begin with our budget workshop tonight. I just want to go through the packet. I know we've been using the technology and we need to continue to do that, but sometimes with these presentations, it's better to have the hard copy. So what you have in your packet is our information technology presentation, our teaching and learning presentation, our special education programming, transportation and facilities, transportation. Information, and then you have a budget. Okay, so. At that time of the year, we've been working at this. Lori laughs, but we have been working at this. I do want to comment that the Town Finance Department has been extremely helpful through this process. And I want to publicly thank them. Mark Tanguay and his team has really assisted our business office in preparing the budget and getting reports. So publicly, I do want to thank them. It is teamwork, and I think it goes a long way with our future consolidation and how those things are gonna work. So, thank you. Tonight, we're gonna have David go first. David is gonna do our technology.
She also works hand in hand with our registration department and our building administrators to provide accurate data as well as educational resources for our teachers. We have a vacant position in our department, which is our coordinator of operational systems and technical support. That person is responsible for our help desk, works with our technician on tier one support, and is responsible for all of the non-educational operational needs of the district. That position has gone unfilled due to our current financial situation. The team has tried to absorb as much as possible those tasks, but sometimes we can't get things done as fast as we need to or as efficiently as we need to because that position is so critical. We also have our technology integration specialist, Ron Dumey, who specializes in professional development for administrators and teachers. He is a valuable asset to our team, always working with our tech coaches to make sure that our teachers are trained in technology. Last but not least, we have Jeff Jenkins, our district technician and assistant network administrator. He is our boots-on-the-ground individual, always in the schools, lending a helping hand to anyone who needs it, providing that tier one support and any kind of break, fix, repair. So again, you can read that on your own for more detailed information, but I just say again, our team is very special here in Middletown. So let's talk about next, where we have been as a district as it relates to IT in the past fiscal year. We have been very busy this past fiscal year and very proud of many of these accomplishments. And allow me just to highlight a few. For last fiscal year, we installed the first of its kind in the district, which is our Middletown High School video wall, which is six sixty-five inch 4K resolution panels, and they serve as digital signage in our lobby. Our students and teachers really love it, and our high school does an amazing job keeping it up to date. We also launched a brand-new IT ticketing platform to manage, better manage our tasks and make us more efficient. We also beefed up school security this year by installing a state-of-the-art visitor management system at all of our district buildings. Additionally, we were able to provide more documented, more document cameras to our teachers. We beefed up our power school reports to make them more accurate. We started our one-to-one device replacement Chromebook program by purchasing and deploying over 600 Chromebooks this year, as expected. We beefed up our cybersecurity and things in the backend by enabling multi-factor authentication in all of our accounts. We conducted a CISA cybersecurity assessment that was district-wide with the federal government, in addition to making plenty of network improvements and account automations to make us as lean and successful as possible. So now that was a little preview of what we've done last year. Let's look forward now to our budget process. Like we do all the time and every year in Middletown, especially as it relates to IT, we take a very strict and careful approach to budgeting. We assess all current software subscriptions based on usage reports and user feedback, and that data is invaluable to us to make well-informed, educated decisions to best support our teachers and students. We obtain quotes and negotiate every single quote with our vendors. We account for any potential price increase. So your proposed budget is based off of quotes for next year's pricing so that we can give the most accurate data to you, the school committee, to make well-informed decisions. Because we're planning so far in advance, sometimes companies cannot quote out that far, so I work with our interim business manager Lori Miller to account a 10% increase to be safe. We created and reviewed the budget with all the members of our IT team first. And then we also review the budget with our central office team, principals, and budget managers. There's also a lot of overlap with our teaching and learning. So a close collaboration with our assistant superintendent Michelle Fonsica is also taken into account to make sure we get all of the educational resources we need as a district. We also make adjustments based on all stakeholder feedback. And then we present the proposed budget to you all today. So for an overview, let's start with software rentals. For FY25, we're anticipating a proposed budget initially of $700,000 in software. What does that include? That includes both learning apps and educational apps, such as our Power School information system, Carnegie Learning, Edmentum, district websites, Destiny Follett, Frontline, Tyler Technologies' Google licenses. And so that's just a little taste of all of our software, both educationally and operationally in the district combined. Now, Madam Chair, if I could ask you a question. If you were to take a guess at the breakdown of a percentage ratio between what we spend as a district on operational software versus educational software, where would you think the district lies? Is it 70/30, 60/40, something else?
I was quizzed.
For educational versus operational?
Yes.
I didn't pass.
You didn't pass? Okay, so that should give me a clue. I got a 50/50 chance at this, right?
You do.
Of winning or losing it. I would say.
Trick question.
It is a trick question. It's because in part of me wants to say the educational aspect of it, but the other side of it is it costs a lot of of outside networking to make the, it happen. So I'm gonna say the operational is more expensive.
By how much?
Um, I'm gonna say 70/30.
70/30. Any other guesses from the committee?
I peaked.
I peaked.
Oh, come on.
See, I didn't peak because I'm blind. All right.
Well, before the surprises ruined any further. The breakdown is actually almost 50/50. It's 53% education, 47% operational. And even though this is quite a simple graph, I find it quite humbling and really excited that it is 50/50 because it goes to show the commitment to educational success of ensuring success for every student. As I said before, Michelle and I work very hard on the education side, quizzing and sending out surveys, assessing usage reports, and a lot of meetings back and forth. And if you think about it, we're asking 700,000 in education, in software. So if you think about the breakdown, that's 350K for each side. And as Theresa pointed out, you can't have the educational without the operational backing up. And so even though there are fewer operational costs, there's a lot more education that kind of make up background. But again, you can't have one without the other. You need the operational backing and support to make the education work. And I am very thankful for the committee for your understanding of that importance. So that is the breakdown.
That was way off. Put me on the spot like that. Thanks.
I tend to put you on the spot almost every year, right?
Don't you do that, do I?
So we're looking at 240,000 for professional services and utilities. Well, what does that include? That includes our Power School data consultant, our new copier contract, our Student Data Privacy Alliance agreement that includes things like our phone system and professional development, our cybersecurity services, cell phones, and Power School support hours. That's all things that that includes. Moving on, we also have $40,000 in supplies and equipment. That includes things like replacing student device chargers when they go mysteriously missing, replacing computer parts, networking tools, extra batteries when batteries die, ink and toner, emergency hardware upgrades, et cetera. But one thing that I didn't mention yet was hardware. And just like how you can't have the educational software without the operational software, you can't have any software without hardware. And unfortunately, this evening, the budget for hardware in the operational budget is zero. We do not have a hardware budget that's coming out of the operating budget. We rely solely on CIP to maintain our hardware budget in Middletown, and we had been for quite a while. So this year, we are asking 520,000 for our capital improvement. This includes one-to-one Chromebooks, classroom technology upgrades, upgrades to teacher devices, network infrastructure upgrades, having a centralized data center, advanced computer labs, and more. Again, this is very important. The town in the past has been quite generous with their CIP funds with IT. They realize the importance. I would also like to thank Sean Brown, our town administrator, the town council, and the town finance department for realizing this need and supporting us because this is what's been keeping us going, especially with our one-to-one device replenishment program that I'll talk about a little bit later. So moving on, now that I've done this with you all for a few years, I want to give you a look of last year's, the FY24 proposed initial budget versus what I just discussed with you today. So this is what the breakdown looks like. Last year for software, I asked for 630,000. We see a $70,000 increase over last year, and that's for two main reasons. One, we purchased some software that is in grants that are sunsetting and like other things that have been sunsetting in grants, you all know that problem that that poses. But additionally, all of our software, the vast majority of it is subscription-based, meaning we just don't buy a piece of software and own it. Those days are gone. Everything like your Netflix and Disney Plus subscription at home, same goes for Power School and other things, both operationally and educationally for software. So you naturally see price increases year over year. What we do is we work hard and we fight every vendor on those price increases to keep them at an absolute minimum. And so that's what we're looking at initially before any reductions for software. However, we were able to save some money this year through certain efficiencies that we've implemented the past year to ask for $10,000 less in professional services and utilities and 10,000 less in supplies and equipment. Furthermore, you'll see a substantial reduction in the overall CIP ask. And again, these are just initial proposed budgets, not the final. But you'll see that we're asking for $210,000 less because of the recently passed bond. We're taking a more careful approach of how we're investing in capital until more decisions are ironed out. And that's why you see the reduction in the CIP costs. And that's why we're asking for 520,000 for this year. But because we reduced so much, that 520 is all the more important and crucial to our operations. So now that we went over the numbers, I want to take a moment to go over some IT updates with you all. I want to first talk about how our one-to-one program is going. To give you a one-to-one program update, again, the original goal of our one-to-one program is to make sure that we have a consistent, predictable, and manageable way to maintain a one-to-one program in our district, especially given our financial circumstances. Our goal is every year to plan upgrades for grades two, five, and nine. And the thought process behind that is that if I get a device in second grade, that device is gonna follow me to fifth grade when I get a device refreshed, when I'm getting ready for my fifth grade year and middle school years, and then in ninth grade again to get me ready for my high school years. It keeps costs predictable and consistent, but operationally, it makes implementation manageable with our very lean structure of our team. It keeps the fleet up to date in a responsible manner. And last year, in the FY24 year, we're off to a successful start. We started with 600 devices, upgrading those three grades, and our students are loving them. We hope to continue to purchase this plan in this fiscal year and the FY25 year from CIP funds.
Can I ask you a question, David?
Yes.
Who got, um, who got the new ones last year for the money that we spent this?
This current grade?
Yeah. Yeah.
Two, five, and nine. So they're always going to be two, five, and nine moving forward, so that those devices naturally cycle through as the kids age.
Got it.
Yep. So I want to next talk about our new website, which I know has been a hot topic with some of you out in the crowd. So our new website, just again to give you a progress update, I partnered again with our assistant superintendent, Michelle Fonsica, on this project. Michelle provides a lot of the historical piece of the district. She also provides a lot of the user functionality and the content that's needed. I'm responsible for the design and the flow and the user experience of the website. So we've really been working hand in hand very closely on this. So we are completely, we're completely redesigning our district website and all of our school websites. Initially, we set out to first have a staged rollout of just our district site first and then the schools to follow. But we thought it would be much better if we did everything at once to have a unified experience. We want to make it, we want to make it faster and easier to find important information. We have an all-new menu structure and navigation design. And we are having simplified and uniform school websites, so that our principals have less to maintain and everything is linked back to the district site. And we have new visual user experience enhancements. Most importantly, this all comes at no additional cost to the district. So if we take a little, here's just a sneak peek. Now, what you're about to see is the website, the new website. And in a future school committee meeting, I can talk to you about this in greater detail, but this is just meant for you to get a sneak peek tonight. This is our refreshed homepage. As you can see, the bottom buttons are completely redesigned. But also the top navigation bar, this is the new menu structure. And the thought process is that we have fewer, more concise options that just make sense. So if you're thinking district, we have a district tab that covers everything from facilities to IT to business to student services. We have teaching and learning that covers assessments, report cards, and curriculum. And we have resources for things that, for forms, handouts, for every stakeholder in the district, whether you're a parent, a student, a teacher, or just a community member. And this is a little bit of what this menu, as you hover over these buttons, what they look like. You can see that the menu looks very clean, consistent. We have our teaching and learning menu, and we have our resources menu. Again, very easy to understand, simple navigation with a lot of important information. Here's what an example page looks like. This is an example of our teaching and learning landing page. But if you zoom in, we also made enhancements to these buttons. And every, almost every page has a side panel of quick access links and important downloads.
David, um, on the homepage, um, one thing I think is critical, and a lot of people have talked about it, how hard it is to find out when our meetings are. I think you should have our meetings and the agenda and a link to each school committee member, so if they have a question, they can email a school committee member. And, uh, when the agenda is in the timed in meetings, that has to be on the front page.
So in addition to revamping the main page and the menu, we also are redesigning every page of the website. And we have substantially redesigned the school committee page again to have those things, as you mentioned.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely. Just want to also give you a quick update on our interactive displays. When I first started in Middletown, we had a total of five interactive touch view displays. In year one of our implementation phase, we purchased 45 additional boards. Year two, we purchased 95 additional boards. Moving forward, with those numbers together, we have over 140 digital deboards in our classrooms today. Our goal at last year's meeting, at our budget meeting, was 125. So we substantially passed that goal. So we're at 140 boards as of today installed, being used in our classrooms.
That's grants too we've used.
Yep.
For those.
And by the end of the year and into early next year, our goal is to have 165 boards installed in every single classroom and meeting space in all of our district buildings. This is huge. We'd be entirely one-to-one, 165 boards a year from now.
Can I ask a quick question? Are these boards, what's the lifespan of these boards?
It's about your average television, so it's about five years or so, five to seven years. So how do we pay for all this? Because 165 boards is quite substantial. We do not take anything out of our operating budget. We actually utilize grant funding and other alternative funding opportunities to fund all these purchases. So it only did we rapidly scale up our rollout. We did it with no cost to our operating budget.
Is there a replacement plan? If you say they're good for five years?
So that would be in upcoming CIP projects. Yep, absolutely. They do last longer than a traditional projector, because you're not replacing bulbs as often, you're not replacing filters as often. They just overall provide a greater lifespan, and they're just boards like these. But in the, in the classrooms, they're 65-inch, 4K resolution, fully interactive, multi-touch displays. Teachers can wirelessly project and interact. They have whiteboard software built in. And we're really passionate about continuing our multiple PD in-person opportunities and also providing online resources and training videos on our district professional development website, Tech Talk, which is a website created by Middletown teachers for Middletown teachers. And that is my budget presentation. If the committee has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Yes.
I had a question. Did I write it down before? Were you, um, the proposed budgets from last year and this year, this year's is less than last year's? Those were proposed, what was received?
So what was?
In general, you know.
Yeah, so our interim business manager and I work very closely on certain cuts and reductions that have to be made.
Right.
So as far as that data is concerned, because we're still in the middle of this fiscal year, we just don't have that yet because the 24 years.
How close to the ask it was, just to kind of, you know? Or was it not close to the asks?
Just for what, for what exactly?
Well, I'm just, when he gave, and maybe that's too broad, the proposed, and he broke it down into the categories, the proposed for FY24 was 1.66 million, if I add that super fast. And then 1.5 million was the ask. I'm just curious as to what was, what was gotten for the year.
Was the actual?
Yeah, what was the actual? How close was it? Or, you know, where lots of cuts had to be made? I'm just, you don't have to answer it right now.
Yeah.
I was just curious.
I'll get it.
Yeah, you know?
And I can tell you that from a broad perspective, again, it's still difficult to say, because we are still in the middle of the fiscal year. But I will tell you that there's always going to be reductions.
Of course.
This year's going to be no different. And so sometimes things are obviously reduced. But this is obviously, as we'll put in our workbooks, what our team feels as though is necessary to run a district of this size.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you, David.
Well, thank you so much for your time.
And you told me 30-something slides. I said you're never going to get through it.
I thought I do, I'm sorry.
You did.
All right, thank you, everybody, for your time.
Thank you. I know David has another, um, appointment he needs to make, so.
Thanks.
Thanks again. Okay. Who wants to go next?
I think.
Ready?
Okay. All right.
Okay, so I'm going to focus on the teaching and learning side of the budget. And it's a little bit different than technology. So with the teaching and learning, I work really closely with the principals on their orders, um, working on, uh, replacing curriculum items that have been purchased. Also, we would handle at this level any large purchases that were handled, that were, um, proposed for a big curriculum. This year is a year off for that, so we're taking a break from big purchase. So most of what my budget consists of is consumable items that we've put into the school budgets. But really, today I come to you to talk mostly about staffing. When we talk about teaching and learning, one of the biggest pieces we feel, and I know the principals agree, is that there is some needed staffing. So that will be my focus as I take you through. I think it's always important to start off with data. I feel really, um, I feel really strong about what the data tells us. This is really just a quick peek, and I know that you've heard a lot of this already. So I'm just going to kind of go over it really simply. But I want you to be proud of and know that our kids are making great growth. And that is a message that you need to feel really strong about in Middletown and feel great about. It's, it's telling you that our kids are, when we say they make high or typical growth, they're growing to the rate that is expected of them. Now, the proficiency rate is, is the one that we don't feel as comfortable with, because it doesn't show that growth at all. It just shows in relation to proficiency. So if they're proficient, it's, they get into one bucket. And if they're not proficient, they get into another. So when we talk about our ELA, at the high school, ELA proficiency is up to 65%. But when we look at our lower grades, we're more down into that 30 range, uh, 30, 40 range. Mathematics, we are a bit lower with proficiency. Let's think about since COVID, though, right? So we were in one spot in COVID. Since COVID, both areas, ELA and math, have been on the rise in proficiency. I will say that math has gotten pretty flat, um, what ELA tends to creep up. But our proficiency rates is where we really, we need to increase the proficiency rates. But our proficiency rates would never increase if our kids aren't showing strong growth. So we have 70% of our kids showing typical or strong growth. Let's talk about the other 30%, right? So they're not showing, they're, they're not showing the growth that we need. And that's where we need to focus a little bit more. I think it's really important to look at our state accountability results. They actually do some of this work for us, because they indicate the subgroups that are needed to target support. And those subgroups should be no surprise to you, but, um, we've talked, because we've talked about them a lot. But students with disabilities, um, our differently abled group is a lower-performing subgroup, as well as our students who are economically disadvantaged and our English language learners. These three subgroups have some barriers in place to access curriculum. And so I think when you, when you hear our budget today, and I say our, because I really do feel it's on behalf of all of the schools, I will say that, um, you'll hear a consistent message that we need to get better access for those students. So these are the identified students by RIDE and the low-performing groups. They do actually give them by school. So Aquinix, um, and Forest, and GLA all had students with disabilities as listed as their target group. And when I say target, it's, it's, has to be focused on in their school improvement plans. Those students aren't making the growth that they need to be making. So they want to make sure all of those schools know that this is a population that we need to, to work on. And I know that when, um, Mrs. Burkett speaks, she'll speak to that need as well. We, we all need to work very hand in hand with increasing supports for students that need them. We also at Forest Avenue have another group, and it's the economically disadvantaged students. Those students also need other layers of support, especially at Forest Avenue School. They are not making the gains they need to make. And then at GMS and MHS, we have ELL students who are also not making those gains. The good news is we have ELL students at Aquinix who are making those gains. And I think we've talked about why that is, right? So we have kids who come in with no language, um, you know, English is their second language. They come in speaking very little English, but they're immersed in language classes and our literacy classes with our youngest teachers, um, youngest grade teachers, K1 and 2, who are using a lot of great language strategies and teaching strategies that really support their learning. So when they come into high school with that, it's, it's a lot more difficult to access the content. And this group of, these groups of students that you see up here really require more resources than we're able to provide. We've had, we had some big cuts last year, and we felt those. And I think we have to think about the word equity. So what's equitable is to make sure that these kids have the supports they need. The other thing I just wanted to mention is that we have some surrounding states that have done a really good job with this work. One of them is right, our closest neighbor in Massachusetts. They were ranked number one in the nation for student success. So if you think about that, and that was in 2023, they, they were named fifth best education system, but they were named number one for student success and achievement. So what are they doing? What are they doing to get those kind of results? Well, I did read a lot of different articles and research that went behind digging into what, what Massachusetts has been doing. And these are some of the key components of things they are doing. They're increasing family engagement, and they're looking closely at student attendance. They're expanding their early childhood programming. They're expanding out-of-school opportunities. They're ensuring that all students are reading proficiently by grade three. They're providing social and emotional supports and resources. They're providing high-quality career and technical programs. They're providing high-quality materials and sustained professional development. And they're creating a multi-tiered system of support to ensure equity for all students. Now, you should hear some real familiar things on that board. First of all, our mission, which is to ensure success for all students. We've got to ensure that happens, and that last block in the multi-tiered system of support is something I'm going to talk about. Also, you're hearing about out-of-school opportunities beyond the bell. You're hearing about expanded childhood, um, early childhood programming. We talked about how important that piece is. Yes.
Do they have a universal pre-K in Mass?
They do. They do. And we've talked about chronic absenteeism and improving our attendance. We've talked a lot about high-quality curriculum materials. We've actually been replacing those, offering PD. These are great things that we need to dive as deep as we can into. I think we're dabbling everywhere, but we need to really dig in. The one, the two that I'm going to focus on are the last two blocks that I've kind of put a little bit of red in there. Ensuring all of our students are reading proficiently by grade three. All of the research indicates that if they are, they have a much better chance in the grades that are ahead of them. Students that aren't are off, are, can be on your dropout list. They can be students that struggle in school. They can be students that always remain behind. So we want to get our kids reading proficiently by grade three. And the other one I'm going to focus on is that multi-tiered system of support. And that's going to give us the equity that we need for all students.
I just want to say something.
Sure.
Michelle, about the Massachusetts system. I, I think that the big difference too is that they have things like pay-to-play. They have, um, education as a right. That's a huge difference that we could never be equitable to a state like Mass because of those, um, differences. And Rhode Island does not have education as a right. That's something that Lee Fenton has worked on for years and years and years upstate.
Yeah.
And it's just something that our legislators are not passing. So I, I think it's great to, to see that from Massachusetts, to use that as an example, because we should be following that kind of, we should be following suit and making.
And the governor talks about that. I mean, he tells that he, Rhode Island should be like Massachusetts.
Yeah.
You know, how are you going to show us?
And it's, they have pay-to-play. They have.
Well, huge cities and towns in Massachusetts, uh, their municipalities are told what they.
Exactly. They don't have a cutoff at 4% like we do. They're told, this is our budget, this is what we need, and the town writes a check.
Yeah.
And, and, I mean, it's, it's a very different system, but that is why they're so successful. Because they have those differences that we don't.
I agree, and I wasn't implying at all that.
Oh, no, no, I know. I'm glad you used that as an example, though, because you know what is, to me, what that says to our community of, we are doing the best we can with our resources. They have very different resources, which is why they're at number one.
Right.
Because they're able to get to that point.
Absolutely.
With their resources and their, uh, and the dollars.
Absolutely. They're very well-supported.
Yes.
And I, you know, I have friends who teach in Massachusetts. I began in Massachusetts. I know the difference that's there. But I will tell you that there are pieces that we can continue to do better, and there are places that we should focus, because we can learn from their work. We need the support that they get, for sure. And when I say providing equity for all students, it doesn't mean giving them exactly what Massachusetts has. It means that every student in Middletown should get the same support as a student that sits on the side of them.
Of what we can provide.
Right.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I, I, I really struggle when kids have barriers to their learning. So as the Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, one of the most passionate pieces that, that I, I have is really about making sure that all kids have access, equal access. And I. And I sit today sadly to say, I don't believe they all have equal access because we've had to cut some tiers of instruction that would help them get that equal access. So that's why I want to talk a little bit about equity in Middletown. And this example, if you go to a lot of PD as a leader and educational leadership, you see this photo. And it's because it's the simplest way to think about equality and equity, right? So the equality is giving everybody the exact same thing on the left-hand side. Everybody gets the same box. But equity is giving them what they need to seal the fence, right? And if you look, sometimes they need more than others. So we want to talk about equity. We want to create a level playing field for all the students in Middletown. And that's not so easy to do when we're facing the budget that we have. And so I recognize that. Our business office recognizes that. Our superintendent recognizes that, our principals and our teachers. But we've got to keep pushing for that, that piece to, to show how important it is. So multi-tiered systems of support is something that Middletown began working on last summer. We have a very tight handbook of multi-tiered system of support. And really, what it is, is a practice and a framework to make sure that our students get the equity they need in the classrooms and beyond. And really what it is, is to ensure that the equity is for all students across all areas, across all resources. So it doesn't matter what grade I'm in or what school I'm at, we all get what we need. And what I need might be different from what someone else needs. And I think that getting the resources they need to achieve their learning goals is the key to closing the gaps, right? If you get the resources and the help you need, your gap, your proficiency gap, your growth rate's going to increase. Your proficiency gap is going to decrease. That gap between students who might be your typical performing students and students that might be in that, that needed subgroup. And when we think about this, I did not invent this, this has been out there, this is research based. But these are the three tiers of instruction. And I would say that just about all of our teachers could tell you about these and why they're important. But if you think about them, all of our students are in the green, all of them. They all have tier one. And what we've done better in Middletown over the last three to five years is making sure that's equitable. So tier one instruction is the one, is the instruction they get in every classroom. If I walk into an ELA classroom at Forest Avenue, I walk into one at Aquinix in the same grade, the curriculum is the same, the materials are the same. It doesn't matter which teacher buys their own. We have provided them with high quality curriculum materials, and we are making sure that we're also supporting them with professional development so they can deliver that. And that's the green. We have worked hard on ELA and now on math. And then it's going to be science and social studies. That's the core instruction. We're doing a great job there. We're focused on that. It's the orangey-yellow and the red that we need to work on a little bit better. So if you think about that, you think about students that have been identified for special education support. Those students would be receiving more intervention, more specialized instruction on top of the green. But how about students who have not been identified, who are still struggling and showing you they are not accessing the core curriculum? When I say core, I mean that green. If they're not doing that, then what do we do for them? So if you look at the yellow section, it talks about targeting specific skills and delivering small group intervention. So we know when kids are struggling, it's really important to bring them together into small groups and to really focus on common needs and supplement the green, right? Supplement the core. And then on top of that, if students are still not showing improvement, tier three focuses on intensive intervention. We would love to see this in the smallest groups possible, even a one-to-one environment would be great. But this tier is longer duration, longer meets more often. And those students are getting even the hot, they're getting the highest level of support. Sometimes they're getting it in many subjects.
So I think. Think about our budget. Where did we reduce last year?
Yeah, so we reduced.
We all in tier.
Yeah. We reduced the tier two and three. And, and I will also say to you, this isn't just academics. So this is, these are students who need help in academics, reading, writing, math, and science, social studies. But these are also students who need support behaviorally, socially, emotionally. Okay, so tier two and three supports can come in many different ways. So moving on to the second slide, I'm not going to stay here very long. This is just a refresher because you all have heard this from me a million times. But we're moving right along with the green, right? So that green section that we just talked about, the core, K to five, they're on year three of the new curriculum. Six to twelve in ELA is on year two. Math, the whole district is on year one of the brand new curriculum. And science, we're planning to investigate next year, but we're still waiting to have enough choices from RIDE. So that's why that one's on hold. And also, professional development, I want you to know your teachers out there are putting themselves out there to learn and go to things. And the nice thing is, is there's so many grants that are available for PD. So I've been able to provide all of that professional development, not in the general operating budget at all. So that's been wonderful. The slide up top, how do we pay for ELA? How do we pay for math? All out of S R funds. So we were able to supply those outside of the general budget. I'm a little nervous about science. We're talking next year, probably two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollar commitment for K to twelve science. And this is a regulation. This is something we have to do, like we had to do in ELA and math. It was so nice to have the S R funds.
And literacy, we got a literacy grant.
We, we had the S R funds and we had the five-year literacy grant. Those were key in our implementation. And I hear a math competitive grant is coming, and I will be on that to make sure we are applying because that could give us five years of math coach. That could give us money for additional materials. I will be on that for sure. And our scores show we need that, so hundred percent. But everything you see on this page has been provided outside of the general budget, which is pretty remarkable that we've, that we've been able to do that. I have a zero, really a zero line on professional development. We've, we've used our Title II funds, we've used homeless, we've used ELL grants. We just keep going for them. I went for three pre-K grants in the last six months. I mean, anytime we see something, we just, we go for it. And that money really does add up. So aggressively looking for avenues to fund special revenues. And, and back to just saying that the teachers have been so dedicated to learning. So nothing will help if you just throw materials in people's rooms. You have to train them. And so our teachers have stepped up, done trainings after school, done trainings, you know, at night, really taking courses. We've been able to offer them courses. I think I've showed you in the updates, and they're all doing that hard, hard work. We've really been focusing on ELA. And now we're going to be flipping to the math a little bit heavier. So because we've just implemented it.
Does HQCM stand for? I'm sorry.
High Quality Curriculum Materials.
Okay, sorry, I know you've told us that before.
Yeah, no, no, that's okay. Please ask anytime.
It's right at the top of the page.
There's a lot of those. And as you know, seven of our teachers right now are in Roger Williams doing the full M L L training to be certified teachers in multi-language learners, which again was all grant funded. So it's excellent to see what our teachers are doing, and we're going to continue that.
So those seven teachers won't necessarily go to a specific ELL classroom, but they'll use it in their classroom to help with the students who are multilingual.
Correct.
But we end up putting students specifically in those classrooms.
Well, yeah, we're building capacity in our schools. And as I mentioned, we've also written a grant with Van Buren to match that. So to, to really make sure that all of our teachers have that background. We also will be offering this summer a multi-language learner endorsement. So it's a little less than a certificate. So to have that as a general classroom teacher is another layer of support. And again, I say that because right now all we have a lot of times is the general, general teacher. But to build those supports of tier two, tier two and tier three is really vital. Just jumping on to what we have and what we, what we might need. This is really the teaching and learning focus. It goes back to those, that triangle you saw, the green, the orange, the red, right? So if you look, I've put subject areas in colors here. So the green on this one is the literacy, the purple is the math, the yellow is the M L L, and the red is the social emotional. If you look at what we provide in tier two and tier three, there's about twenty F T Es, which means full-time employees in this tier two and tier three model. And again, I haven't included the special educators, which are also in this model for students who have been identified. Literacy, we have about five in the district. That is a low number, three of which are Title I. We've talked about the schools that are identified as Title I. We've also talked about our literacy coach that we've gotten through a grant. And we've talked about the high school person that's also through a grant. We have five. We need to think about what we're doing here and how we're focusing. Remember what Massachusetts did? They focused on reading by grade three. Maybe we need to restructure and think about putting a lot of our efforts into that grade, before grade three, our K to three model. And I think you have all principals supportive of that, right? Because really, if you catch them before grade three, we know they're going to do better as they go along. So we have posted this year a new structured literacy interventionist. That person would be at the K three level, and that would provide an additional support. That would make this number six. And that is currently posted. So that's, that's great news. That's great news. And we hope that position could carry for next year. It's in the budget right now. The purple section is math. This is a place where I think we really need to focus. So we have zero. And they always say you should build your, your core area before you build your tiers. Well, we've done that this year. We're building that core area. We're going to provide professional development, but I will be going for additional grants to supplement that with coaches and interventionists. We've got to have, and I'm not talking a one and done. We're looking for grants that go five years or more so that we, if you hire a coach after five years, they should be able to pull back a little bit because they're working with teachers, building capacity, and they're able to pull back a little bit. We're hoping that we can get something in that area because this is not good for Middletown with, with zero in that area. That means that two and three in mathematics, we have no supports beyond students who have been identified for special education services.
Well, again, it's the early intervention. It's no different. We're talking about early childhood. Early intervention makes a big difference. We should be having a math coach in the elementary schools because that's going to, if you do it now for that age group, it's less work later when they get to middle. Because they're going to get the general concepts down. I mean, that's just common knowledge, common sense, but unfortunately, doesn't always work that way financially.
And I know that, you know, with the literacy, there's lots of different programs that the teachers have done. What about for this math intervention, it's a math coach? What does that, you know, entail as far as a training or anything, or is it just?
Oh, absolutely. So RIDE right now, when they presented the, the option of a grant, they're talking about having districts pull together coaches and then training them based on the purchase of the core curriculum. So whatever curriculums we've purchased, there are similar districts that have that. And then they would train coaches together as a state. And that is very appealing to us because that would mean that our coaches are working to develop themselves professionally and coming back and spreading that to our classrooms.
So as far as, you know, there's posted a position for literacy, right now, if you were to post positions for the math, what would that entail?
So I think right now we'd probably post positions that were intervening positions. So there would be positions where we're asking teachers to focus in and work with small groups in that tier two instruction. And we'd have clients for them tomorrow. Yes, because we've identified them and our classroom teachers are working with them. But this would give that extra layer of support. We've talked about the yellow a ton. It's no surprise, you know that really, compliance wise, we need an additional ten teachers in that area. The good news is, is I've gone for that large grant for Van Buren. If, if, if we do get something, it could increase as much as four additional teachers at the high school for ELL. So, or M L L. And again, I use them interchangeably, but English language learners are multilingual learners.
Any word on when?
May.
May, okay.
Yep, and we have, we have met with them twice now, and we revamped the budget per, with some of their advice. It does look very good that we'll, we'll get something, but I don't know exactly what that's going to look like. And again, this will be multi-year. This will not be a one and done. They want to really invest in the programming, and they also love that we're building capacity with, with teachers. The one thing they keep asking is, how is Middletown going to commit to sustaining this work? And so that's very important that we have a plan to be able to do that. And that last section is also very important. It's been pointed out by our principals. If you can't get students regulated, it's very difficult to get them access to the curriculum, right? So our social workers and school psychologists and school guidance counselors play a vital role in helping that. Just today I was at GAD, and I saw, I saw one of the guidance counselors four times in four different rooms, pulling kids and working with kids who needed her. And I thought to myself, wow, she's been around today. And then as I left, she was teaching a lesson in a classroom. So being proactive, right? And, and teaching those social skills. So I do think that that component is also very important. And right now we have one additional posted for a social worker. So there was this year, money found to do that for the rest of this year. And I believe right now it sits in the budget for next year, which would increase that number as well. So that, those, that's good news.
I do think. And when you think about it, when we needed to reduce the budget last year, where did we cut? We didn't cut tier one because we needed the tier one. We did the tier two and the tier three. We reduced reading teachers, we reduced a social worker. And now, you know, we are bringing them back. We brought back a multi-language teacher, one point two. We brought back a social worker, the new social worker. We brought back a reading teacher and structured literacy. So.
Yeah, yeah. Most of those are in here except for the two that haven't been hired, which is the structured literacy and one of the social workers, I believe. So we're, we're going in the right direction, but I, I just think like when we look at math, it's a little scary. And that's some of our lowest proficiency is in math. I don't think it'll surprise you to see my list of priority positions. And one of our great principals who's out in the audience today used a great quote, is without data, all you have is opinion, right? So we have the data to back this, but as we get money in the budget, we need to look at where the greatest need is. It's a hard, hard question when we find one position and we need so many, right? Everybody advocates so well for their schools and their students, but there's many different groups that need many different things. And you have to go back to the data, the research, look at what other places are doing that's really working. I think that committing to all students reading by grade three is, is, is essential. And I also think that mathematics support needs to start the foundational skills of mathematics. They don't have that, that's going to be super difficult as they go up the line. So all of these areas are the priority positions that were identified. When you looked at the principal staffing requests, many sat in these, you know, these bulleted areas to no surprise of any, of anybody. In addition, I have the pieces from the high school that are essential. I know Principal Sweet has been up here talking about the very important pieces, the C T E, as well as the graduation requirements and making sure we have a good handle on our work-based learning opportunities. So the C T E coordinator is essential piece for the high school next year. We currently don't have a C T E coordinator. And I know that in our last presentation, she talked about the need for that. That could be a current person that does a percentage of that work. And then also a senior project coordinator. This is a graduation requirement that all students, their senior year, have that senior project. And to do it really well, we, we, we need, we need a coordinator. And we also need dedicated classroom time for the students to develop those programs, those projects.
And ideally, when you talk about certification for the senior project. And ideally, when you talk about certification for the senior project coordinator, someone with an English background, an English cert would be what we would be looking for. For the C T E, someone with a business background would be a certification, would be what we're looking for.
Um, the last thing I'll mention is something you saw on the Massachusetts list, which is Beyond the Bell Extended Learning. I mean, I think everyone here understands that high-quality after-school programs certainly improve student outcomes. Um, and we have a phenomenal group of teachers who are dedicated to after-school work as well as summertime work. Um, and over the last few uh, years, we've been building the, those numbers. I mean, this picture is just taken recently at G L A for the, for after-school group. Um, very small group, very small instruction. What does that remind you of? Tier two, right? So it's, we keep the group super small. So what we usually do is have a teacher and a teacher assistant. So the teacher can work with a group about this size, no, no more than six in a group. And then they can swap students out so that the T A works with some of the students. And then the teacher gets more instruction time again with another group.
How much time is Beyond the Bell? How, how, how long is the program?
So it goes for one hour on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
So if they need support in two areas like math and E L A, they get half an hour?
So not, not always. I mean, sometimes um, sometimes schools will, will look at six weeks or eight weeks of time and say, we're gonna focus on mathematics and we're gonna invite the kids to do this piece. I will say that G L A has been really focusing on mathematics. Um, and they um, are all sort of implementing instruction and intervention in the same manner. Um, but it doesn't, like especially in the summer, we mix that with the literacy as well. We try to give as much as we can in a small amount of time that, that we're able to give.
It's just one hour twice a week. I shouldn't say just.
Yeah, so it's Tuesdays and Thursdays and it starts, we try to start it, um, by the end of October, we get it rolling. And then it goes through the end of May. It's at all schools.
I just interject one thing you're saying from being my principal side last year. I think that we looked at the data to see like where the most need was. So like maybe Katie sees at, at G L A the most needs in math, so that's where she's going to target. So it wasn't necessarily that like Aquinic and Forest did the same exact thing. We kinda looked at what we needed and then, um, as Michelle said, like for six to eight weeks, we would say, okay, we're gonna work on, this is gonna be E L A, and then we would maybe choose the next six to eight week cycle to be math. At one point last year, we chose like a, to do a R I C A S kind of ramp up. So it's dependent on what your data looks like. So it's important, I think, that the principals do that. That's why they don't fall.
Yeah, they're very individualized. The other big piece of this is just to be very transparent, it's also about staffing, right? So how many staff do we have willing and able to stay after? Um, and that sometimes is a large component. We do pretty well in the summer staffing the last few years. After-school sometimes is difficult. Our teachers are really committing to professional development outside of school. They're committing to, there's meetings on Wednesdays, there's so much going on. So sometimes staying after for that hour on Tuesdays and Thursdays isn't available. Some have other jobs, some, you know, some tutor in some places. And all of that has to be part of the equation as well. Um, but I agree, we try to focus it as much as we can. Um, these are the components, just so you're aware, we have really expanded over the last few years. So um, it gets bigger and bigger. So we have that after-school program that we were just discussing, that's Tuesdays and Thursdays. It runs um, throughout the year. G A is actually trying a Saturday Academy. Um, they just started a couple of weeks ago, so that's on Saturday mornings. Um, we have in the past also, instead of doing Apple School, done before school as well. That's an option if teachers say, I'd rather come in the morning, we say, okay, um, that'll work. We have transportation for all of our students. And then on Monday and Wednesday, we offer enrichment programs. So, you know, it's really important, part of their social emotional well-being is being involved with their peers, right? And, and having some enriching experiences. So we offer art classes, we offer intermurals. We offer, you know, um, six-week session with the Bird Sanctuary. We order, offer time with Potter League. We are as creative as we can with uh, M Cozy's help. So it's really become a great after-school, great after-school opportunities um, at every school. Um, also at the high school, we've been focusing on that credit recovery piece. And I know last year we talked about the success, twenty-three students crossed the stage because of that after-school help. Um, then you know about the summer program, we offer intervention. The problem we had three years ago was that a lot of parents would say to us, um, thank you for offering it, but uh, it's a half day. I work all day and I need a place for my kids to go. So we added the enrichment camp to it and that has been phenomenal. So the kids attend uh, intervention in the morning and we've partnered with M Cozy and they pick up the enrichment camp in the afternoon and it is awesome. And our kids go from focused learning to a little bit more fun activity learning. Um, and they have a great time. So we do that for four full weeks, sixteen days, Monday through Thursday all summer um, through, through the month of July. And again, we provide the transportation and all of this has been possible from the town grant. So um, as you know, the town's been super supportive of this programming. Um, the last two sections are how we've kind of even um, reached out further. We have that early childhood component this year. Uh, we're working with EB CAP. They're doing the playgroups for birth to age five. Um, they're doing um, assessments and home visits and working with pre-K programming and referrals. And we've hooked up um, that with our early childhood coordinator as well. So that's been great. And we also do a lot of family outreach. So um, we, you know Megan Mainzer and how much she's done, but we have the Oasis Food Pantry that feeds tons of families every month. Um, we do homeless supports. We have the Boys and Girls Club that we send students to where we actually provide them dinner and homework. Um, the Y M C A wants to do a partnership with us this summer. So we, we love the partnerships and Newport County Mental Health, we've been working with them on wraparound services. So this year, um, we, we wrote a grant for thirty thousand and we hired them to come in and do the wraparound services as well, after school. So this program has exploded and it's been great. And there's so much to celebrate. If you look at the numbers, I mean, we continue to hold really steady at about five hundred in the summer. And, you know, somewhere close to three hun, oh, actually, three hundred in the summer and somewhere close to five hundred, four fifty to five hundred in the after-school program. And those are unduplicated students. Those are students, that's how many students get to attend the program. They might not attend for the whole program, but they're attending a piece of the program at one time or another. So the big discussion is um, finances for Beyond the Bell. So if you think about why we've had such a robust program, it's because we've had town appropriations for the last few years that have funded Beyond the Bell. So I'm a little concerned about summer this year and, and next year's after-school programming. Because right now, that is in question on how we would fund these after-school programming. I mean,
We begin planning for summer like yesterday.
Yeah, we actually are meeting next week. We're gonna meet anyway because we wanna be prepared. But the funding for this, it's, it's a large amount of money. Um, and we have never spent all that was appropriated. We've always tried to, you know, stay, we've definitely tried to stay under the number, but right, even to date right now, you can see where we're at. Um, but on the next slide, I kind of have a projected budget of what it looks like. Um, that, you know, this is, is what it costs. It costs just as much in the summer basically as it does for the whole year. Because um, you know, we have nursing su, uh, services and we have daily busing and it's a longer day. Um, we also work with, collaborate with um, extended-year services for special needs students. They, they're part of this program. Um, and so it's great cuz we collaborate and work with special educators and regular educators are in the program. So we're able to offer the tiers of instruction. Um, and this has been wonderful. Right now, we have about ninety-six hundred dollars coming to us from the three sixty-five grant that um, the town wrote with the governor. Um, but we're still short about three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to fund any after-school programming. And I know that we will continue to talk with the town. Um, I think that they've been funding this through ARPA dollars and I believe that runs out by October one. And I know that those have been, you know, appropriated. So I, I don't know where this is going. I'm, I'm hoping that this can, can become a priority conversation because I do feel like what we've built is providing those tiers that I've talked about outside of the school day. So, super important.
And there's nothing else coming from the three sixty-five from the state?
Well, they are talking about renewing, but our three sixty-five grant um, was written for Student Success Officer. So that's the person that we've had helping with chronic absenteeism. And then in addition to that, it's gonna be supporting the enrichment side, which is the uh, M Cozy. So the M Cozy provides that whole camp, that, these numbers don't include that. But the three sixty-five grant is going to be able to provide that portion of it, which is awesome for our students. But the morning enrichment, I mean, the morning intervention part is essential as well. So, and this has been really pre-K to twelve, we've been able to do this. So um, I know it's, I know it's a priority conversation. Yes, if we, if we start with the money for the summer, that would be the best place to go. Um, and then figure out the other piece. Um, there are some grants that would pay for certain, certain groups of students, like our homeless population or our E L L population. But again, we wanna be as equitable as possible and offer it to, to remove any barriers for any student, wanna invite students. So that concludes, I did include some important links at the end. Um, digitally, if you have this, um, you can see our M T S S handbook. Um, you can also see our attendance dashboard, which all schools have been improving. And the governor shared today that Forest Avenue was one of the top um, schools for attendance this week. So we're very proud um, to have that uh,
I just wanna see what that was. It was like ninety-something?
It was ninety some, ninety-six percent, I think, attendance rate. Um, but all schools are going um, on their way up. And that's, that's not just be, well, it's awesome that we have the Student Success Officer, but also our principals are really um, making this a priority. The conversation in the state has been attendance matters, but also in our schools. So we're, we're doing a good job out there, getting kids in school. They, if they're not here, we can't do much, right? So we gotta get them into school. So I thank you so much. I know that was a lot, but I'm super passionate about this area. It is the heartbeat. It's the heartbeat of Middletown.
Thank you. Okay, our next uh, presentation is our Director of Student Services, Lisa Burkett.
Sure, just connect.
There you go. Okay, so my presentation is a little different only because I don't have anything to look backwards on because the department is new. Um, yes, it was part of region and, but we are now our own. So I kind of wanna talk about what we've been doing this year and where we want to go moving forward. So um, this has been our mantra, kinda talked about this in the summer, that we want our department to be, and I'll kinda give you a little background on me while I'm standing here cuz I've never really been able to do that for all of you. Um, where every student gets what they need. And that is really important because that is the crux of what individualized education programs are built on. It's what they need. It's not necessarily always what someone wants, but it's what they need.
And it aligns with equity.
Yeah, with equity, right. So I think that what's important to understand is that I E Ps are supposed to be specifically that individualized. They're not cookie cutter. So what one student needs can be very different than another student. And they might have a similar profile, but we have to really tailor them. And that's why some, oh, happened, do I just hit the X or no?
Um, yeah, you could, no, uh, just minimize it.
Okay, I don't know why that came up. Um, so this is really what we've been working on. Um, I was a special educator for over twenty years before I became principal. So I've seen, you know, I've seen some really great I E Ps throughout my career. I've seen some not so great and how we have to kind of build them together. And the whole point of I E Ps are that they are group, they're done by a group. So nothing is decided before we do them all together. Um, it's why you go to an I E P meeting with just a draft and then things might change while you're sitting there because you're talking, they're conversations. That's how my department um, operates. So just who makes up the department? Um, myself and then I have an assistant, Heather McHusker, the Census Clerk Doreen Courtney, who's the point-five early childhood coordinator. We have twenty-eight special educators um, throughout the district, five point four speech therapists, three social workers, two point six psychologists, four nurses and teacher assistants. And that includes one-to-ones. Um, the nurses fall under my department as well. So if you look at, our department is from ages three to twenty-two, so it's not K to twelve. It extends beyond that. And as Theresa knows, the preschool population is forever growing. Um, and there's a lot of need for the three to five-year-olds. It, why is it doing that?
Must be hitting something.
I'm, no, I don't think I hit anything, but let's try it again. It's been um, it's been challenging that age group. Um, only having a point-five coordinator. Um, that's something, as you'll see, that I'll be asking for for next year. Um, we have four hundred and forty-two total um, special education students, which is, it's a lot. Um, we have forty-one placed out of district. And we are working really hard to get some of those students back. That forty-one out of district is just in tuition, is about two point seven million dollars. That doesn't include transportation. And now tomorrow could go up to two point eight, it could drop to two point four. It's variable. Special ju, th, these numbers are accurate today. Tomorrow they may, something might go up or something might go down. In our preschool program, we have nineteen students attending the preschool program that have I E Ps. And then we have what we call by appointment speech for preschool. They only get speech services, so they walk in, they make, there's an appointment, they come upstairs. Um, and we have seventeen of those. In addition to parentally-placed private students with I E Ps, we have nine of them who are out in um, St. Phil's. There's multiple places they could be. We are still responsible for servicing those students. If they have an I E P with us or a Middletown student attends a school, that is not one of our five schools. I have, not me, we have to evaluate them, we have to create I E Ps, and then we have to figure out how we're gonna service them. Yes.
What's the criteria for a parent to choose that option? Is there a criteria or is it, they just can say, I want, I'd like this? They don't have to, because it's not, because the district doesn't have that or?
So if that's the case, if a student needed a program nee, needed is the key word there. If they had to have a program that we, I could not provide, then I would be responsible for paying that. However, if,
If there is a comparable or if there is a program in place and they still, and they would decide, is it the same thing?
They, I don't pay for them, but I am still have to provide the service. So this has changed multiple times throughout the year. What it used to be um, was if I pick up and send my student to La Salle, then, and my daughter has an I E P, they'd say, well, that's too bad. You sent them to La Salle, you're kind of giving up your service. Now that's not the case. So I also have to account for students that attend schools that are in Middletown who have I E Ps that live elsewhere. Out of, these are the bane of every special ed director's assistance um, because you are given, there's a formula from Ride where you're given X number of dollars for students based on the census of December first, students who attend schools that are in the, in Middletown who have I E Ps. And then I have to figure out how I'm going to service them with the dollars that I have. So I can have a student from Portsmouth and I can say, well, I can give you two times a week for thirty minutes of reading support, but their I E P reads four times a week for thirty minutes. Portsmouth has to pick up the rest. It's very confusing.
Only the rest and that the district doesn't have to.
Right.
And they're attending our school because?
They're attending a private school in Middletown. Why can't I think of the one that's right here?
All Saints.
All Saints, that one, like kids who attend All Saints from Portsmouth or Brit, it doesn't matter where. It really doesn't make a lot of sense and
Make any sense.
No, it really doesn't.
They're not a resident.
I don't make the rules, I just have to follow them. Um, so it's, it is, it's very difficult because then what we're, we have to do is, I have to get with, well, Michelle, um, with Michelle's help through the gr, um, with CRP, we put in the, we put in a tutor, Michelle puts in for Title One. And then I try not to steal her tutor, but I like to use the same person to service our kids over there. Um, and you have people with different addresses. I mean, it becomes, it becomes a little bit, this, that bottom one takes up a lot of time and it's only really nine students. A lot of the top we have all covered, um, but it's, it is a piece, it's not the way it used to be. So.
So do, if you have a, a Middletown resident who sends their child to a school in Portsmouth, Penfield, whatever.
So they have to, so what they have to do, we have, like, we have a student at St., a couple of students at St. Michael's right now. So I assign them a case manager. So if it's a second grade student and they belong at Forest Avenue, I ask that. I put that student on that person's caseload. So they are responsible for writing the IEP, making sure we're in compliance with all of the evaluations that have to be completed. And then we have to sit with, with St. Mike's and talk about how they are going to service. What can they provide? And I will say, we did just sit with St. Michael's. They, they were wonderful, they do have supports there. So we said, okay, the student's IP is going to be covered by your supports, we're all set. It's not always that cut and dry, but that's, you know, sometimes I, in meetings, I do try to convince, you know, if you were to come to Forest Avenue, if you were to come to God A, this is what we would give you. You know, you, you decide what, what makes more sense for you, your family. I mean, it's, it's bigger than just, um, the number of minutes that we would sit in front of them and give them specialized instruction. It's, that piece gets a little dicey, right? It's, it makes my, it makes my head spin a little bit sometimes too.
Yeah. Now they're visiting.
So my philosophy as a special educator and as the director is that it really is inclusion for, for all students. Everyone deserves to be included in the gen ed setting. I don't believe in taking a population of students and putting them in a classroom I, by themselves all day, it's not how I operate. If that's what you're looking for, I'm not, I'm not your girl. Um, I think students learn, we learn from each other. And this is just, I have, um, this is, I got this video from a parent of her son being included in, um, PE at the high school. And I wanted you to see and listen to what's happening because it just, it makes me smile. If I could make it play. So that's one way, oh, that's just one way to include, oh, how come I can't get it small again? Don't I just hit that? There we go. Um, not only is Jack enjoying that during the Pacer test, so are all of the other kids. And everybody learns from things like this. This is what is really important to me. And I think that's why I feel really strongly about having some of our kids in our district placements come back. They belong with their peers. And some students will be in out-of-district placements forever because that's what's appropriate. And that's what they need, and I'm going to give them what they need. But can we provide programs and build some programs so they can come back? This is actually a teacher in our district, her son, and it's just really nice, it makes, made us all very happy. Oh goodness, we're going to watch that sixteen times, okay.
I needed to hit go Jack one more.
Yeah, one more time. So I wanted to explain a little bit about early childhood. So we have approximately seven hundred students in, who are ages three through five in Middletown. And the goal, so for the state, we're supposed to screen a hundred percent of them. That's, that's a lot of, that's a lot of students to screen every year. So our goal is to screen eighty percent. Um, and as of February twenty-sixth, if you just, we had thirty-five referrals to special education and thirty-four students were eligible for service. And we are currently, which is why we had to add another preschool program. We had one full-time, now we have one point five, um, and that's comprised of twenty-four students. This number is really growing. Um, and we've talked about universal pre-K, which doesn't necessarily include, um, special education, um, per se, but bringing those types of opportunities to all of our students, I think, would help. So this is, this is an area where we really need, um, to put some focus. Um, just what we have for programs. So at Forest Avenue, we have the Pathways to Success Program. There's a K and one program and a K, uh, two and three. And that program is primarily for students, um, who have difficulties on, with regulating, like their emotions, the social emotional, um, behavioral piece. And then at Equidnic, we have an intensive classroom for K to two, which is for students that have multiple disabilities. Those students that are in the intensive classroom require a little bit of time out of the gen ed setting. So we need a place for them to go where there's not always twenty or twenty-five kids around, because it, that, it can be a lot. But they are all pushing in to the general ed classrooms. These are students who came back from Tiverton, this program was in Tiverton before. Um, the transition back was a little, a little rocky, I think, but they've really done a nice job. And, um, Erica Balk, the principal at Equidnic, has really pushed for the kids to be included in the classrooms. I was there today with, um, you know, we start by, starting with music and art and PE. And then slowly but surely, everyone gets pushed, pushed in more and more. Um, and then God A Learning Academy has, all, they also have a pathways to success, um, for students who struggle, um, with some behavior issues in grades four and five. And then at the middle and high school level, at God A, we have a pathways to success, six, three, and a life skills class. And at the Middletown High School, we have a life skills class as well. That's just a continuation, that would be that intensive program in elementary, moves to more of a life skills model in middle and high school. East Bay Works is a program that we have at Middletown High School. It's a, what we call a partnership program with Bradley. It essentially is an out-of-district placement in the public school building. So it's in, in between. It's not, the kids who are in there don't quite require a Bradley placement, but they require more supports that we can't give at our level. And tho, but those students go out into the general ed classrooms as is appropriate. So we might have a student in East Bay Works who is out just for math. And then the rest of the time they spend in this classroom, receiving their, they get all of their services through the Bradley, um, teachers. And what that does is that is a reduced cost, it's not the cost of a Bradley. There's a, there's, it's about half of what that is. And, um, it's that program I've sat in on, I have to sit in on all of those meetings. It is extremely successful. And we have a really nice relationship with Bradley, and I think that that's, that's why. And then in addition, my picture, um, we have the transition program, which is grades, uh, ages eighteen to twenty-two. So once high school is over, we do keep some kids on until they're twenty-two years old. If anyone would like a bag like this, we're selling them and they're making them, I went with them to make them. Um, and they do a lot of community-based, um, they're out in the community, um, doing job, doing jobs out in the community. They spend a couple of days with us and they spend a couple of days out.
It's housed at our middle school. Um, it's not the ideal spot, but when we started this program, we wanted something for the students because they were at the high school for so many years, you, we wanted a, a kind of a different location. So I'm looking forward to when we have the new middle and high school, uh, a space for those students.
Right. Um, we have about eight students in that program right now, teacher is wonderful there.
And we have other communities that look to this program because it has been so successful to tuition in. So that it's, could be a revenue source for us, um, if appropriate.
Right, we just had someone asking us this week, so, um,
And the other piece, um, uh, is that, uh, East Bay Works that we have at the high school, we used to have a Bradley, uh, satellite school at our middle school for years and years. In fact, one of our principals was a teacher, uh, in that program. And Lisa is establishing a partnership. We didn't, uh, there were very few students from our community in the program. So several years ago, we said, no, we could really use the space. Um, but now Lisa has established a great partnership with Bradley and they're interested in, uh, coming back to God A and we would have students in that program.
We just had a meeting actually today.
Yeah.
Um, with them. And what, this is when I talk about bringing students back. It's not, it's not always fair to say, oh, you've been in Bradley with ten students and three staff and here you go, you're going to go into the twenty-five students. That, that's not, I'm not setting everybody up to be successful. Some students, yes, some students, no. So what we'd like to do is develop the program at the middle school to start because it was already there and very successful. Um, we have a bunch of students that we'd like to bring back. Um, and that would be, that would be wonderful. We also, East Bay Works, in addition to the partnership at the middle school, we do take students from other communities. Middletown first, um, I'm looking, we're looking through the census right now and who we have there. Who would be a good fit to come back or what do we, what is it, you know, what are projections look like? And then if there are open spots, we open it up. Um, it's Bradley that gets the referrals from all the districts. And then they could recommend this as an option, but they will talk to me first to make sure that we don't have someone on the horizon that I, you know, that I think we should be sending. Um, it's re, it's a really nice, um, collaboration with Bradley. Um, we have developed our special education local advisory committee. Um, we, this is, it is parent-driven. It is not run by me, I am an invited guest to the meetings. But what we're working on is we had, this is Gregor, you were there last time, I'm trying to think of how many. It was really a productive meeting, maybe about twenty parents there. We had somewhat, we also offered on Zoom, um, we did have parents who were away, who were watching it, um, on Zoom and participating that way. It's a way for parents and community members to kind of voice their concerns. Um, and see where we can improve. And, you know, based on our first meeting, one of the big things that came out was communication. So we are required to have these by law for, four times a year. So between our first and our second, we developed a listserv for special education par, um, parents. We have a spot on the new webpage for it. Um, and we've been really working on, I've been working on listening to parent concerns. That's really important, um, to me, and I want parents to be able to feel heard. That's important. If they're not heard, we're never really, we're not going to get anywhere. Um, and I think parents know their kids best, and I always tell them they're their best advocate. And then I, I have to describe kind of what we see on our side too. Um, and that's when I get to the, what they need. Sometimes what they need at home isn't always what they need here at school. If, you know, I have four kids myself and sometimes what they tell me they do at school, I would never, I never believe. And the rever, the reverse is true as well. Um, so I think this is just a really important, um, kind of up and coming piece we're really trying to develop. And the more people we can get there to the meetings, the better off we are. You know, I, I, I sat at this first meeting and I had a parent from GLA, a grandparent, tell me that her grandson has had an IEP forever and she has no idea what it means. She said, I can't, half the things in here, I don't know what they are. And I said, that's really important for me to hear because it is filled with all kinds of big words and acronyms. And that to me means I have to talk to my staff about, yes, the document has to look a certain way and it has to have certain things in it. But when we present it to parents, we need to be presenting it in a way that anybody off the street can understand it. That's, otherwise, it, it's just a, it's just a piece of paper, it doesn't mean anything. Um, so just listening to things like that are, are really important for me. Um, building capacity within Middletown Public Schools, we do right now, and I know you've heard this before, um, Wilson Training, Wilson is, um, a multi-sensory reading approach. We contract out for that. Um, we, right now have three teachers who will achieve the Wilson certificate by the end of the year. It's about a hundred hours, it's a lot of work, but that's building within our own staff. I don't have to contract out now, I can use our own people to do that. Um, we have job coaches for the Transition Academy and currently those are contracted out. I'm looking at how to train our own staff to be job coaches, what that entails. I'm not sure this is going to happen for next year, but it's like a, a thought, you know, this is an expense, um, the job coaches. And this would require us purchasing a vehicle though, someone needs a chauffeur license. It's not just as easy as saying, well, go with, go with, you know, Johnny to, um, stop and shop. It doesn't work like that. You had, there's a lot more to it, so I am working with that. And then again, the last piece, which we spoke about already, is the partnership, um, with Bradley classrooms. We have East Bay Works. Right now, we're really hopeful that the one at the middle school will happen next year. And the following year, I would like to open one at the elementary. And that's it for me. Anyone have any questions for me?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Lisa. You know, it, it wasn't an easy transition, um, from, going from the regional program to our own program. And we had rocky, you, you know, very, very transparent, it was rocky in the beginning. And I think things are leveling out, we're addressing some issues and, um, you know, Lisa's doing, doing a great job. So, um,
All right, next is, uh, our facilities and transportation.
Oh, good afternoon, Poe George, the Facilities Director for Middletown.
And? Friends.
Transportation and safety also.
Please don't forget that part.
We don't talk much about safety. So, um, today we're going to be talking most about financial, uh, facilities and transportation, financial needs for the upcoming school year. And also be briefed on what my capital improvement requests were for this year. Um, so I want to take a step back and remind you guys of what is out there because we don't really talk about the buildings and facilities. We talked about building a new high school, um, but we don't realize how much value we have in the buildings that we do have. Um, so we have three hundred and eighty-eight thousand square feet of buildings, um, eighty-two acres of grounds, which is quite a bit. Um, I updated all my numbers this year, so, um, these are the ages of the, the buildings that we have. It's fifty-six years, sixty-five, sixty-seven, and sixty-nine years old. Um, those buildings are worth over a hundred and sixty million dollars. And they required quite a bit of money to, to keep them up and running. Uh, so my team, um, we have sixteen custodians this year, uh, plus myself and an unfilled administrative assistant position. Uh, have, uh, five maintenance, so it's three maintenance technicians and two full-time groundkeepers. So my staff is twenty-two as of right now. We're constantly trying to work on energy management and keeping our, um, gas, electricity bills down as well as everything else that, um, comes with running these buildings. Uh, we're responsible for the use of the facilities, uh, during nights and after school and summertime. And we do all the scheduling for that, we collect revenues from outside agencies that rent space from us. We do a lot of project management, which is, you know, the bigger projects that we do at the schools. And we're responsible for a lot of safety and inspections that are required by the state and the town. On the transportation side, we have the day-to-day school busing operations. There's also statewide transportation for special ed and out-of-district students. And then we run the beyond-the-bail transport, which is town-funded. So the biggest challenges for this year is, you know, just a lack of resources and finances of my department. We're critically and chronically underfunded. It seems to be that, you know. When we're looking for money, a lot of times people go after facilities. Seems to be easy money, interim budgets, but it. It's hurting my department, you know, and I'm trying to keep it going. But every year the budget gets smaller and costs go up. So I'm facing an ever-changing future. We get a new building coming up as well as a consolidation of. This building going back to the town. Equidnic going back to the town and then eventually the Goday building, which will be demolished to build the new school. I've had a poor history the last five years for budgeting history and forecasting. Hasn't been a lot of attention paid to my department. Mostly due to, we didn't have. Facility directors in the position that. That did the work that was necessary to try to keep the budgeting correct and to forecast out to keep finances coming in. And then there's been a lack of preventive maintenance the last five years since a little bit before COVID. And then I also have a lot of issues with the purchase sort of system that. Because we have to go to the town to get approvals that it, you know, a lot of things that I deal with are immediate needs. And having to wait for funding to come in for that is, you know, takes its toll on a department. Some of the successes that we've had in the past year. We're fully staffed. We have two open positions right now and what we are. More staff than we were last year in terms of vacancies of a few. People that were out on workman's comp come back and settle back into their positions. It's provided a lot of consistency for the department. And with Laurie's help, we've been able to actually create a viable budget. That actually has set up a good foundation moving forward. And of course, I'm always looking for research, key revenue generation ideas and cost-saving initiatives. To try to trim the money down and bring money in from the outside. So in, you know, our facilities team, we have a great management. You know, pat myself on the back. And also I did hire a new maintenance manager coming in this year with Dave Roderick's retiring. He's settled in great. He's dug his heels in and he's been doing a great job. And we're going to be adding two positions to our maintenance team that one has been empty for over a year and then Dan's old position. I'll have my maintenance team back up to full staff, which is great. So the five-year plan that we're looking at, like I said before, we have the gradual decommissioning of the three buildings. And we need to set up a new mechanical and HVAC preventive maintenance program to ensure everything that runs. It's kind of a two-fold situation that I'm dealing with is that we have to keep these, few of the buildings alive for a few more years while we build the new school. Then everything will change over to having to, you know, get a good maintenance program in and, and take care of the new school after it's built. We're also dealing with the requirements from the. Architects and the OPM team to get the stage three submission. We just successfully submitted the stage two. For the new building that was coming up and now it's on to stage three. A lot of that has. Dig my heels in. We have to do a lot of design work and. Setting up the new HVAC system, emerging, the energy management systems. A lot of the infrastructure of the school that we'll have to talk about in the next six months. And I'd also like to create a better CIP program for the next five years, working with the architects. Some of the costs of what we're going to be doing for the renovations of the high school and stuff is in the new bond. So it does affect my operating budget. It affects my capital improvement program going forward. So this year I don't, not as bad as last year grim numbers. So last year I came to you with eighteen and twelve percent increases in electricity and gas. They've stabilized. So this year, gas company is projecting a six percent increase over last year's prices. That was eighteen last year. And electricity, they projected a four percent increase where that was twelve percent last year. Rubbish removal is eight percent up. It's going to be going up eight percent. And then of course, you know, dealing with purchasing a lot of supplies, stuff I've had. A very tough year with inflation, just really turning up all the numbers, you know, all my contractors charge more. For visits due to gas and everybody's wages have gone up, supplies have gone up. And they pass it all on to the consumer and unfortunately we're the consumer. And in addition to that, you know, our buildings are getting older, HVAC systems are getting older and. They're breaking down more and then they cost a lot of money every time they break down and they're just getting old and tired. Takes a lot to keep them going. So looking at the transportation piece, so it's still at fifteen buses that we use for regular student transportation. We also have six buses and three vans, a specialized transportation. The contract increase this year is four percent more than it was last year. That's contracted. So we don't have. You know, it's a set rate that goes up every year. And unfortunately, the special ed and the displaced student transportation, although we had thought we'd get a savings this year, it seems that. It didn't work in our favor and that's probably going to carry on to next year. These are two things that can change on a daily basis. We can't project these out because they change so often. As we pay tuition out of, out of district students, we also pay for their transportation. And people move all year long. Military comes in, we just, there's no way to project what it's going to be. So looking at my repair budget, this is pretty standard stuff. So we have. HVAC, electrical and plumbing. We have a security of the buildings concerns, keeping the badge systems running. As well as the elevators, fire and smoke detectors. Regular inspections for fire safety. Also have pest control, rubbish collection. And then water and air quality testing that needs to be done annually as well as radon testing. That's just to keep everything, everybody healthy. Then we also have a playground and gym inspections that we have to have done annually. And then. This year hasn't been too bad, but snow removal and sanding of the buildings falls under this category.
We have a snow day in April, so shh, don't say time.
Never seen that.
So looking at my supply side, I'm looking at custodial supplies. We have the maintenance department for the guys that do a lot of. Creating, they just actually made a nice shelving system for the wood shop up at the high school. We have gasoline and diesel fuel. All of the grounds department supplies such as fertilizer, paint to line the fields up at, at the high school and at the middle school. And then the regular water, electricity, natural gas. Office supplies and then supplies for safety and security. And my preferred, purchased professional services, I just have employee training and then just the money that is needed for security with the card access system. Transportation that we've already talked about. Previous slide. And my capital improvement plan, listed most of them for you to see this year. I just want to let you know, I brought you fourteen items last year that I considered to be safety items that were critical in nature. Unfortunately, I got zero funding for those fourteen items last year. So got my fingers crossed for this year, but we'll see. I'll take you through some of the major ones. The first, this is not our playground, but it shows this. Rubber matting system that we can have installed. I got a quote, the lowest quote I got was for nineteen thousand nine hundred to do the three playgrounds that we have. It's a one-time expense versus dealing with six thousand dollars a year. They usually pay for mulch. So in three years' time. We'd make our money back on the system. This system has a twenty-foot fall rating, which means you could climb up to the roof of that. Playground option there and swan dive off and you'd just bounce off the ground. You wouldn't even get hurt. Not that anyone should do that, but I'm just, no. So for twenty, twenty-foot fall, protection is pretty strong. We don't have anything that's twenty feet tall. So imagine that a kid that falls from six feet or eight feet is going to fall. They're not going to break their arm when they hit. They're going to bounce. Which is going to reduce litigation. In addition to that, it's handicap accessible, which, you know. The principals at Forest and Equidnic will tell you that's, that's tough to get wheelchairs out to the playground for those students to get out there. The next thing is looking at, and I've asked for this for several years, is. To repair the concrete work around our schools. You can see the holes that are there. You can see the curvings that's missing. These are trip hazards and nothing like that. It just makes the exterior of the school a little bit uglier than it should be. And I'm sorry about the blurry pictures, but I took those today and it was raining. So these are the best I could get. We've also, I've asked for two years now for money to. Redesign the visitor parking spaces at our school and put up signs. We've been written up. By the state a couple of years in a row for not having these spaces. It's basically just to guide. People that normally don't come to the school to the parking space and then into the school. So that they aren't wandering the campus and it just, it increases security and it cuts down on the people wandering around. I'd ask for. Money to, so we have a dump truck. The one on the left is actually not in service. It's, it's old, it's outdated. But the bed on it's very nice. The one on the right is the current truck that we use. And I was just asking for money to swap the beds. Because one on the left is in much better condition than the one on the right. So that would make the truck that we do use a lot more serviceable. So I'd ask for flooring and door replacements at Forest Ave. The base level of Forest Ave, and they may end up doing this when they renovate the schools to bring in the elementary school in a couple of years. But I have to try to deal with the next three to four years. It's just a lot of the tiles are popping up the edges of them. And they create tripping hazards. And when you have, you know, first, second and third graders with tripping hazards, it's not a good combination. So these two cafeteria fans at the Equidnic, this is in the gym. These are warped. You can't really tell from these pictures. It's about twenty-five feet up and I have to take the pictures to show. But when they spin, they wobble and they don't push much air. And I just need, they just need to be replaced. So I'm just asking money for that. Our next project is a cafeteria ceiling at the Equidnic School. The ceiling that we have there is, it's old. It's. I don't even know what the material is that they're using, but. Every once in a while, some of that material will fall off and land on the table. So we're trying to put up a drop ceiling or to drywall. The ceiling, we're probably going to do this over, either over April vacation or the summer. It's a lot bigger project than we had expected. We're looking to get that done. And that's it. And there is one. Request that didn't show on here because it bothers me a lot. We have a tractor that my guys use that. The cab just has a bunch of holes in it. They breathe in the exhaust while they're driving. It has a homemade makeshift wooden door on it because we can't get the money to replace the door on the, on the tractor and. Being a director of this department, it's, it's embarrassing. So I didn't want to show pictures of it. But that is also on my list to try to get that tractor repaired or replaced. So. Anybody have any questions? My depressing presentation.
Thank you very much. Definitely know we have some CIP money we have to go after. Thank you.
Thank you, Poe. Okay. Well, that, the presentations, I just want to thank everybody for, great job you've done on the presentations. You've really captured what the district needs are and. Thank you. So you have before you a budget. That we promised. We want you to take a look at this within the, you know, next week for our next week's budget. The, what we're presenting tonight is a budget. Request of a million seven. We know that our budget request has to be about a million four, right? For the four percent.
I think it's going to be less than that.
Okay.
But I think it's like. The issue that we have is that when you look at your revenue page.
You're going to use the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm sorry.
The issue that we have is when you look at the revenue page and we, we forecasted this last week. If you look at the state aid education funding formula number and you go, it's probably like third from the bottom. And you look at the increase over the FY twenty-four budget, it's a positive six hundred and ninety-three thousand. That means we're short almost seven hundred thousand dollars in that number. And if you look at the top number, which is the town's appropriation at four percent, thirty-one million, six thirty-eight, nine thirty-seven. We're, we're supposed to get one point two one six eight eighty-two, but when you have to take seven hundred thousand dollars out of that. You're less, you're like six hundred thousand dollars that you can have for an increase. And we had salaries, we had. Tuitions. There's a whole bunch of things that eat that six hundred thousand up really fast. So we have to figure out, we have to hope that the governor. Is going to give us more money. Based on the fact that we, there's a little whole harmless member, they talked to us about the whole harmless provision. So we might end up with maybe three hundred and fifty thousand dollars more, but I won't know the answer to that question until June, when they finalize the state aid. So right now, it, it would only be a six hundred thousand dollar increase for a four percent budget, which is crazy. You know, and.
If you go to this page, the general operating budget, when you just take a look at the salaries. It's about nine hundred and eighty-one thousand. I mean, that's not bad for a district of our size and the salary increases that are in this. It really isn't, but with the fact that we're losing that state aid. So we have contractual obligations of, you know, close to a million dollars. And as Laurie said, you back out the loss where, while we have a six hundred to spend.
Yeah, we're, we're in the hole. And just so you know, this budget is dynamic. It's not cut in stone as we get information. For example, I projected eight percent increase in special education tuitions. If it comes in at four, I'll be able to reduce that number. That'll be a cut without, what I call a cut without a consequence because we don't lose anything. But if that doesn't happen, you know, suppose something else happens that goes up. Then that, that, that will have to be adjusted as well. And it's really all depending on the state aid. So.
So just to walk you through that, the general operate, operating budget expenses. Again, as I said, that salary subline is nine hundred and eighty-one thousand. You go to the next subline, which is benefits. We're actually down in benefits.
And the reason we're down in benefits is because I believe the year we're in now, we overestimated those benefits. So we'll be making some budget transfers. So that number will change too, but it, it's not going to affect the bottom line. we overestimated those benefits, so we'll be making some budget transfers, so that number will change too, but it, it's not going to affect the bottom line.
The next chunk of expenses are the purchase service. And that's from page two, page three, up to the top of page four. And that is eight hundred and ninety thousand.
How about the next page, page five?
Page five is, is the
Purchase services.
Yep, that's what I, yeah. It's page two, page three.
And page four.
And four. So up on the very top is the total of the purchase.
You know what I'm doing? Look at it, last week's. Trying to recover from last week.
Yeah, yeah.
It was a good presentation, though, you got to admit.
And you remembered it.
Well, I remembered the key to last week. Well, you've got to remember that the state has revalued the property in Middletown forty-one percent increases. I, I know people had property six hundred thousand, now it's one point two million. And we're definitely feeling the effect on, on the money from the state. I'm sorry, I was looking at the wrong. Last week, still trying to recover from that.
So moving down to the next section, supplies and materials. You can see there, we're down.
Yeah, we're down a little bit, but we have to look at some of those things.
When you look at equipment, we're down. When you look at the next subset, which would be the yeah, dues and fees. We're down there too. So, I mean, at the end of the day, when Lori did this budget and I saw one point seven, I actually, I, I actually was surprised and, but I actually was kind of relieved because I really thought it was going to be in the two point seven range. So, I mean, our work this week and next week, and, you know, if you take a look at these lines and call us with any suggestions, is to really get this down to the request of the four percent request. Again, the town has helped us out with the salaries last year or this year.
The year we're in now, which really helped us because that added like almost another half a million dollars to our appropriation from the town, which helped us with the four percent on the other side, so.
So what's in this budget, those positions that were taken out are in this budget?
Not all of them, though.
Not, no, not all of them.
The five point two.
But the five point two are in, you know, we have to consider what Donna put in, you know, for our positions. Retirements, there's some breakage with retirements. If we open up early retirement again, I don't know, there could be a few more people that would consider retirement.
Are supports put in? Or the two that are advertised?
Yes, they're in.
The two that are advertised.
So what's in here is the structured literacy, the additional social worker, the multi-language learner.
One point two.
One point two. What's, I think.
No math.
It was the No math.
It was a pre-K.
Pre-K.
And homeless.
On the homelessness.
Yeah.
I, I do have a question. How are we doing on our number of teachers? Shouldn't I ask?
Tell me what you mean by that.
Well, are we up to staff with the number of teachers that theoretically that the state requires us to have? What?
No, we're not.
No, no, for the total school structure.
So our tiered, tier one supports are there and not our tier two, but what we brought back in this budget, the one point seven, is the one point two multi-language learner, a teacher, the so, a social worker, a structured literacy, a homeless coordinator, and the point five pre-K.
Yes, all of our classrooms have a certified teacher in front of them.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
And then, so that's the core instruction, we're, we're at, we're at appropriate.
Okay, we're, and that's what I, we have about, what, two hundred teachers? Never mind the teacher assistants, is that? What else minus?
Plus or minus.
Give or take, yep.
Yeah, okay.
So on the flip side, not in this. Math support.
No.
Not in this.
Nope.
Um, more M L L?
There's a one point two.
Just that one, not more.
That would still put us at like nine short.
Okay, and there are the big ones?
On the, the, the math is, is big, and then even the reading is not getting us back up to. If you remember when we got rid of twelve positions, it's not putting us back to where we were yet.
There's a good number of supports not in the budget.
Yes, and then beyond the bell.
And beyond the bell. Okay.
Is not in there.
But we did try in this budget to restore, restore what we had.
Right.
Or, you know, part of what we had, the five positions, five point two positions. So that's in, and I would like, my recommendation would be not to touch those, let's take a look at the other line items. Because we just can't do that again, we cannot. We have to start building back. We decimated, dismantled the school district with lots of supports from the town, too.
Work in progress. Until March twenty-first.
We're going to look at transportation, that was a request. Mr. Uwitt asked us to, we're going to look at transportation. What are some other ones we talked about today, you and I, Lori, the purchase service?
Yeah, we're going to look at that.
Which would be transportation?
Tuitions is going to be.
Tuitions?
Yep, and then I'm, I'm going to look through the salaries again. The town helped me forecast using the software that we have. And we just wanted to make sure that nothing funky happened with that. It looked pretty good the couple of times we reviewed it, but I just want to make sure that everything's in there correctly.
And again, prioritize, you know, if other positions need to come back. While, while we need the M L L, while we need a reading, I look at our high school with, with the twen, you know, the new regulations, we need that C T E coordinator, we need that senior project coordinator. Look at data again, you know, and drive everything with the data.
I think, you know, like you already said, Poe, it's like prioritization of the the things that we have to do now, knowing that we're going to eventually get to new. But we have to keep what we have to.
Maintain, yep.
Maintain it to the point where we don't have a catastrophic failure of a heating system or
I mean, if we get that additional three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that would really help us. And state aid, so it really, you know, it's less for us to cut. But we have to, you know, my recommendation would be not to cut any more staff. Really, we, we can't, you know, you, you, you made hard decisions last year, we had no other choice. But we can't do this. So that concludes the budget workshop. Is there anything in specific you would like us to take a look at? That you don't think we're taking a look at?
I would tell you to take a look at the fans over at Aquidnic and replace them because
Okay, that would, and that would be under capital.
I'll support you.
And I, I mean, we're going to take a look, you know, Lori, every day checks where we are year-to-date with the budget. And that's why we were able to bring back some of that staff. Hard to find people at this time of the year.
But hopefully then with the idea that we're going to continue this position. We'll start now. We're going to keep you next year, we're not asking you to work for three months and then let you go again.
And they do ask that question.
Right, of course.
We had a meeting with our union leadership and our union leadership said, how many layoffs? And I said, I hope none.
Yeah.
Who else can we lay off? You know, there might be one or two, but, yeah.
Not related for something to look at. Are there any municipalities in Rhode Island that do have a universal pre-K, do you know?
East Providence does. There are a number of them.
There are.
Yes.
That have gone out and done it without the mandate and all that.
Yeah, well, they did get grant money, they did get grant money, they did get the funding. But East Providence went through a competitive grant and they got a number of classes. Our Head Start goes out for competitive grants. So is that a way? We can provide the, the venue for them, our schools, but they go out and they get the grant and then there's not additional overhead for us. Because these grants require an early childhood coordinator.
Somebody who does all the paperwork.
All the paperwork.
Which is very, very, very time-consuming. It's, and that's the thing is that these grants are, are good, but it, it's not necessarily long-term. That's the other thing I'm worried about, it's not necessarily sustainable yet.
Right.
And so if we open up a pre-K program without sustainability, what are we going to do in two years from now? That is my concern about this, and it is a very, very time-consuming position.
You have to, an early childhood program, I mean, you know, I'm speaking to the choir here.
Like to have somebody specifically in charge.
And, you know, all that.
Right, right.
All, all those things. I think the partnership that we have with EBCAP now with the Head Start is one way to increase that.
And where are they at?
They're at Forest and Aquidnic.
And that's doing the pre-K programs, but they're with role model. It's an integrated program, correct?
No.
So we do have some students, IP students, follow under my umbrella, and we do go in and service them in that program.
And we have one in each building?
One in each building.
And what's the capacity in those classrooms, twenty?
I, I think it's sixteen.
Okay, because you've got special ed, it's a mix.
I believe it's sixteen, total.
Yeah, but you need a teacher.
But I need to call our contact and see if they are going to apply.
Which is, that's the, they do the TAs, they do the teachers, they do the subs, they do that, you know, all of it. We just, we keep track of those students, like Courtney, the early childhood Courtney, keeps track of where everybody's going and what's happening with them, but it is one way to add a little bit more.
Do you have any ideas as you pondered this this week and over the weekend and next week? Just email me, call me, and we will look, but you can be sure we're rolling our sleeves up and looking at this.
You know, if you win the lottery, remember us.
Right.
That's a big jackpot right now.
Everybody go buy a ticket after the meeting tomorrow's terrible. All right, well, thank you very much. Are you all set with everything?
Yes.
All right.
Don't we have some things to do besides that?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. Next is the public forum. Individuals may address the school committee on only one relevant education-related topic. Not included on the agenda nor related to personnel or job performance, nor revealing personal, personally identifiable information regarding students. Individuals may speak for no longer than five minutes and must submit a public participation form to the superintendent prior to the start of the meeting. Non-agenda items discussed under public forum will not be voted upon at this meeting. Do we have any forms?
No.
Okay. Moving on to action items. Can I have a motion on the ECM hazmat contract?
Make a motion, the school committee approved the hazmat consultant contract with ECM.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion on these school building committee members?
Make a motion, the school committee approved the school building committee members, Peter Conneton, town council member, Don Moran, council, community member, Christopher Logan, town council member as an alternate, Sean Brown, town administrator and town finance director as an alternate, and Mark Thayer, community member.
Second.
Any discussion?
I had a question. Now, this had anything to do with the, the subcommittee, they still elect their own leadership, correct?
Correct.
No change, okay, that's another question.
So what this is, the ordinance from the town specified the positions. We talked to them after and said, we, we need to solidify this. And so that's how this came.
Okay.
And so these positions will now be voting positions.
Okay.
Not alternates.
And this came with the input from the committee that was there at the town council meeting with the wording that went in, went to it.
With the lawyers and the legal counsel and everything. But it still puts the, Tammy and I are still on it and you and Bill are still alternates, so we kept that as.
Teresa, I, I do have a question on, on those names. What about Mark Thayer?
He's in there, he's there, he's the last name as a community member.
He and Don have.
Oh, I didn't read, okay, thank you.
Alternates have now become members, voting members.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Doesn't have to read this whole thing, basically.
Might be too, might be good.
You want to read it, you want me to read it?
I'll go for it.
Can I have a motion on the school, on the school building committee charge?
Make a motion that the school committee approve the following school building committee charge based on the town ordinance twenty twenty-four dash four, the school building committee S B C shall serve as an advisory capacity to the school committee and town council. The school building committee will have the following duties and responsibilities. Serve as an advisory capacity during the construction phase of the school construction projects. Report to the school committee, town council as necessary on pertinent issues and where applicable to the owner's representative, project manager. To serve as an advisory committee during the construction phase of the school committee projects. Again, attend public meetings of the school committee, town council as necessary to present school building committee updates and reports. To post all meetings, agendas, minutes on the Rhode Island Secretary of State websites, minutes of the meeting will be prepared by the school department designee and shall be approved by the school building committee. To approve, to provide input and oversight relative to the effect of the master planning and, and delivery of construction projects on the community, to examine scope, designs, construction plans, and budgets for reasonableness and compliance. To recommend a master plan and construction projects to the school committee and the town council for approval and submission to RIDE. And to, to any other purpose that shall from time to time be adopted by the school committee and/or the town council. The school building committee shall not have the authority to enter contracts or participate in the day-to-day physical management of school construction projects.
Second.
Any discussion?
Again, this was lifted from the town council ordinance.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
That's right. All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion on the profile for candidate for superintendent?
Make a motion, the school committee approve the profile for candidates for superintendent.
Second.
Any discussion? I just want to say quickly that this profile was created from the survey that went out to the community members. There was, I do not know the exact number of how many surveys went out, but the feedback came back. N S D took all of the wants and the the characteristics that the community and whoever filled out the survey presented in that. They took all of that, they put it into a profile scenario, and that is what we, they will now use to go out for. That's going to be our guidelines.
And each school committee member got a copy of that electronically, it's confidential. And so there was highlighted areas where there was some personal information and that will be deleted from what we're going to approve.
Right. And also, did all the, the information come from the public forums as well?
Yes.
So that was also part of it, not just the
I'm glad you said that, yes.
Public input.
It was all the public input that came in from the, from the four forums, the public forums, and all the surveys that went out across the community of all different backgrounds, educational people, senior citizens, citizens. So they took all of that data, they compiled it, and they took all of the common information from each bullet or each question that they asked, and that's how they designed this profile. So it's, it's, it's very good, it includes military information and includes all kinds of different expectations. So it's just going to be a guideline for the search and the interview process. So, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion on invoices?
Motion that the school committee approve the most recent invoices in the amounts of four hundred dollars and four thousand, three dollars, sixty-five cents.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You have any else? All right, we'll see everybody next.
Make a motion?
Not yet, we'll see everybody next Thursday.
Fourteenth.
The fourteenth.
At four thirty again, yeah.
And that's a budget and a, just a budget.
Just a budget, we might have some action items.
Okay.
So we are meeting on the fourteenth.
We are.
The alternate.
Yep, yep.
Okay, and then we meet the following week.
We do. To adopt the budget.
Okay.
It's a busy month. Lots of meetings.
All right, Tammy, you can make a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn from the school committee meeting at six forty-six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.